So, November fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, a meeting of the East Penn School District Board of School Directors is hereby called order. Please rise and join in the assembly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a sincerely public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is recognition of two board members who are leaving us after sixteen years of service on the board. The next reorganization meeting with the new board will be next month, and so this is their last meeting of their term. And so I'd like to have Ms. Elaine Gannon and Mr. Terry Richline come forward. Mr. Richline, we'd like to present you with a parting gift and also a certificate from PSBA honoring your sixteen years of service. And after I've given this Gannon her gift, they'll each have an opportunity to make a final statement. We'd like to hear from you as on your service, and we appreciate the sixteen years you've given the district. And I'm sure you'll find ways to use up all the available time now when you don't have to be here at the meeting. So Ms. Gannon, if you'd like to make a brief statement, we'd appreciate hearing from you.
Well, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve the East Penn School District community. I've developed many relationships with all of you, and it's really been a privilege to serve such my administrators and knowledgeable colleagues and board members, staff, administrators, teachers. When I started, I had an East Penn school which was much smaller. It's really grown tremendously. We've opened many buildings. So much has happened, and it's really been amazing to see all that's taken over these sixteen years. And it's bittersweet that I even sat down, although I'll miss every review and all of this reviews that I've accomplished. And I'm glad to hear, but I guess I can spend my Monday evening in my slippers watching the news and doing some other things like that. And I think it's only fitting. A lot of good people have gone on to retire, and then principals, teachers, my own children have moved on. So I guess it's time that we move on too. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to serve this school. And I wish you all well as you forge ahead, and also the new members who will join us on this.
Thank you very much. Mr. Richline.
Well, actually, I had planned on saying something toward the end of the meeting. We have other things on here that I didn't want to hold up. They don't have to stick around to listen to me drumming on. But I'll say a couple of things, and I'll reserve most of what I was going to say to the end of the meeting. I never intended nor anticipated being here for sixteen years. I certainly didn't do this for the pay. But I dug out the first budget book from that I received as a member of the board and highlighting what Ms. Gannon said about all the people who have retired. In the listing of the district administration and various building administration, I see name after name of good people who retired. The only people still here, Dr. Torma, was the Assistant Principal of Mann High School. Mrs. Surtable, I didn't see her. Oh, there she is. She was the Assistant Director of Business and Fiscal Affairs. Unfortunately, Attorney Fisher just is listed as work law offices. You weren't listed by name, and of course, the Swiss Army knife of the East Penn School District, Ms. Bertzel, who has been a cornerstone of the district for forty years, and I'm sure she would like to remember. But she's always been here to serve the board, serve the superintendent and the district. And like I said, they're the only names that appear in this budget book. We almost have one more, except Dr. Wells retired last year. He was the last one on that list. And the changes that have occurred have been quite extensive. And like I said, I was, I jotted down some of my thoughts. And as I said, since we have some items on the agenda, that I really don't want to subject some of the people here to what I have to say, so they can take off after their pieces of the agenda. So I'd just like to continue with my comments at the end of the meeting, if so permitted.
And thank you, Mr. Richline. All right, the next item on the agenda, a request to address the board. I have one from Ms. Carlin Blackstone from County, Pennsylvania, speaking on computer science education.
I thought, I think it's appropriate that I decided to come tonight because I haven't retired. And I've been here longer than sixteen years, and I had Jimmy as a student years ago. And most of you know me since I've taught computer science at East Penn since nineteen eighty-one. But last year, I became a resident of the East Penn School District, and therefore, I have a right to be able to come and simply address the board on my own behalf. So I wanted to simply share something. The reason I came tonight was because of the timing of this, which is that Computer Science Education Week, as I'm going to tell you later, is in a couple of weeks, and it will be before the next board meeting. I wanted to make sure that all of you are aware of it. So in any case, by the year two thousand and eighteen, it is projected that there will be around 1.4 million computer specialist job openings. Google is really good at this, and US universities will have generated enough graduates to fill only about one-third of these openings. This trend has been created by having fewer students take computer science courses at the high school level, thus making it hard for them to know whether to choose it as a college major without any prior exposure to it. Fortunately, East Penn has a high-quality program for those students that elect to take these courses, but we are still graduating many more students who know how to use technology than students that know how to develop new technologies, which is what computer science is all about. Therefore, the Computer Science Teachers Association is planning to introduce a new computer science Principles AP course that you should be aware of in the year two thousand and fourteen, which is coming up. Computer Science Education Week is a national initiative that was established in two thousand and nine to raise awareness in K through twelve education. For the past two years, I have encouraged teachers in East Penn to celebrate this week in some way by showing videos and doing classroom activities. This year, I am planning to host, for the first time, a computer science showcase that will be on December eighth from eight to nine PM Thursday night, following parent-teacher conference night at the high school. Near the semicircle entrance, it will include students showcasing some of their projects, the robotics team demonstrating their programmable robots, computer science professionals sharing about their background and projects they are currently working on, and a special apps lab where students will demonstrate apps on their cell phones. We're having Kate to celebrate Grace Hocker's birthday, which is December ninth, and Apple cider to remember Steven Jobs' contribution to the field. Please plan to attend and be in touch with me via email if there are any of you that would like to contribute, especially those of you who I know have some background in the computer science field. Thanks a lot for your time and interest.
Thank you, Ms. Blackstone. No other requests to address the board. We will move on to item number four, a presentation by Public Financial Management and Scott Scherer.
All right, well, good evening. I have a handout being passed around here to hopefully that you'll think it's good news. Because of the interest rate environment and sort of the call dates of your respective bond issues, we do have an opportunity for his bond refinancing, which is what we wanted to share with you. I think when I was here a month or two ago, I did kind of allude to the potential opportunity here in the near term. So what I'd like to do this evening is just briefly go through and kind of explain the highlights of the next opportunity. So on page one, the bond issue that we're currently focused on is a Series A of two thousand and six. About a little under nine and a half million of bonds still outstanding on that respective bond issue. The call date is January one of next year, so we're not approaching it. Legally, we were not able to refinance this transaction until now. The final maturity date is in two thousand and twenty-five. Just like all the other refinancings we've done for the district, we are not proposing to stretch out the debt or short the debt. We just want to basically match the same maturity and go from a higher rate to a lower rate. And so right now, the existing average rate is just a little under four percent. I have a quota here of three point nine five percent. As far as the overall rate environment, we have a chart down at the bottom. That's a municipal index. It's a ten-year municipal index, which pretty closely correlates to your transaction as far as the maturity of it, and that chart goes back to the early two thousands. So you can see over the past ten, ten years or so, although we're not at the all-time low of this particular index, we're pretty, pretty close. So at least from the opportunity to refinance this, you know, it's not the all-time best, but again, all things considered, it's still pretty good. Right now, today's rates are lower than the existing rates, and you know, if we were to do the transaction today, the savings, net savings, and that would be net of issuance costs and net of the state share of savings, are a little over $200,000, and that would be spread over a couple of different fiscal years. And we'll show you how that falls into play. So, you know, not a tremendous amount of savings, but still a little over the normal benchmark that the district has set, excuse me, over the years. You know, maybe just to show you how this bond issue falls in line with all your other ones. If you turn to page two, this lines up all of your outstanding bond issues, which we typically review at these kind of meetings. And so we're focused on column eight, which again is a series A, two thousand and six. Next year, assuming interest rates stay about where they are, we'd like to come back and talk to you about columns five and columns ten. But again, they're legally, although those two are actually legally able to be refunded today because of the purpose of those transactions, because their call date is not for another, you know, ten, eleven months, it's actually, it sounds sort of strange, but rates are almost too low to refinance those. And if we would go to refinance columns five and ten today, we would refinance the debt, but we'd have to put the money aside in escrow until the call date for those two bond issues. Well, those investment rates in the escrow are so incredibly low, that's actually going to hurt the transaction, thereby not producing any economic savings. So those, those two columns, five and ten, are on our radar screen, but they're not producing any benefit right now. And again, like I said, hopefully if interest rates stay about the same, once we get to the call date and we do not have to put that money aside in escrow, hopefully we'll be able to talk to you about some additional savings. So again, we're only focused on column eight, which is the two thousand and six A bonds. As far as a quick period of review of the numbers on page three, this is the existing amortization. So column two is the principal amount, roughly nine point four million. Column three are the average rates, or the respective rates for each maturity, ranging from three point five five percent out to four point oh five percent. That's where I said Ford averages out to about three point nine five percent. If you go to page five, this we did the transaction today, net of loss issuance costs, and again, net of the state share over in column ten would be how the savings would fall into place. So roughly, you know, ninety thousand in the twelve, thirteen year, and then about eighty thousand, and then about forty thousand, and then about break even thereafter. And that's what's producing the two hundred and three thousand savings. And that would again be net of the issuance cost on the following page. So again, a pretty simple transaction. We are not, again, proposing to extend the debt or change the maturity, just going from a higher rate to a lower rate, refunding traditional fixed-rate bonds with new traditional fixed-rate bonds. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have. We could be back if you did want to proceed. I believe there is an authorizing motion before you this evening just to authorize the team to start repairing some documents. We could try to be back for your December twelfth meeting for potential bond sale. But this sort of depends on the market and the investor's appetite. Sometimes when we get close to the middle of December with the holidays, we didn't used to see it, but over the past three years, basically since the market collapsed, we see a lot of investors start to just close their books right around that time and wait till the new year. So we'd like to be ready to actually take the bids like we typically do for that meeting date. But if we just don't see the market being there, then we probably postpone it till your January meeting to make sure you get, you know, an ample enough amount of investors focused on your transaction. So again, we'd like to be ready. If you did want to proceed with this transaction, we'd like to be as ready, be ready as early as December twelfth, but there may be a chance we just fall back to your January meeting, come out of the gates right in the new year.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Scherer? I will say we're always happy to see you. Usually I come with good news, not always. Is there any, could I have the motion, please? Is there any discussion on the motion? None appearing. Ms. Bertzel, will you call her over, please?
Mr. Rensselaar.
Aye.
Mr. Rowe.
Aye.
Ms. Gannon.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Cottle.
Aye.
Mr. Richline.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Nate Oates.
You have your motion, sir, and come back as soon as you can.
All right, thank you. I wish the two board members good luck. I have not been, personally, I have not been here sixteen years working with the district. I've only been working for just thirteen years, but obviously, our firm has been, so it's been a pleasure working with you over the past few years, and good luck to you.
We're always happy to see our student representatives here tonight, and we would now entertain the Maes High School SGA report.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kristen French, and I'm Secretary of Student Government.
And I'm Shiva Joshi, and I'm the Vice President of Student Government.
To begin, we're just going to do a little recap of Homecoming Week. The entire week was a huge success. The Lights Out, which was the white team, won our Powder Puff Football Games. We also won the football game on Friday. The King and Queen were Brian Avell and Gabby Nisiotis, and the dance was a huge success, and everybody had a good time also.
On October sixth, the French, Latin, German, and Spanish language honor societies inducted many students. In order to be inducted, these students had to maintain high grades and have completed at least two full years. So congratulations to these students.
On December sixth, at seven thirty PM, the EHS Winter Choral Concert will be held in the auditorium. Several groups will be performing, including the EHS Choir, Women's Choir, and the Select Choir, and also the From Out of Nowhere, just to name a few. In addition, thirty-eight students were selected to participate in the PMEA District Ten course.
The American Red Cross Club of Maes hosted its second annual blood drive on November ninth. They had a hundred and forty donors sign up, which was a huge improvement from last year, and they hope to continue running the blood drive every year. All of the proceeds from this year's donations benefit the American Red Cross chapter of the Greater Gai Valley.
The EHS Peace Club donated many used books to the Cops and Kids Crew Year, which gives books to unprivileged children. They sold approximately two hundred labels to raise money, and they also held yard sales to fundraise. Another major event was helping the local Miracle League. They teamed up with disabled children and ran the bases at the Miracle League baseball field. The whole day consisted of many other activities as well.
The academic scrimmage team has been announced for this year, and they had their first meet with Wilson on October fifth, and they won in some death overtime. The captain is Devin Reiner, and participants included Caleb Cleaver, Chin Su, Niraj Tchikola, with alternates Rick Gilbert and Asim Vikar.
The brand-new fifth-period launch for freshmen, which we've never done before, that just was new this year, in our opinion, is a huge success because it's allowed freshmen to make a smooth transition into high school. One useful component is the help desk, which is staffed by upperclassmen, mostly seniors. Freshmen just ask any question that they want answered, and if they also ask a question, they get entered into a raffle to win a prize.
FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, is hosting a fundraiser to raise money for the club and to send students to the state competition. They're selling one-dollar raffle tickets, and the winner of the raffle will get all the ingredients of a full Thanksgiving meal. Also, the regional competition will be held on December twentieth. And that is everything.
Thank you very much. We're always appreciative of the reports of all the activities going on in our high school. Does any member have any questions for our representatives or any comments? Ms. Fuller.
Well, no questions really, but thank you very much. I was very glad to receive copies of the singer in this packet. It's always good to have a little window on what's going on. Thank you so much for your report.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. I might suggest that if you don't want to stay around for a fairly boring meeting, you might, and you might exit at this point, but thank you very much for coming. We appreciate the report.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the report of the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Thomas Seidenberger. Dr. Seidenberger. Thank you, Mr. Ballard. I'm going to ask Mr. Dr. Moyer. Shaking hands. Would you kindly introduce?
He was one of my first-grade students, and I never recognized him at first. He said hello to me like he knew me, and until he said his name, now I know it's true.
Would you bring forward your guest and introduce him to the board? Sure, please.
With me tonight is Principal Lee, our visiting principal from China, who's from Hebei Province, from an elementary school, I believe it's Ning Yan Primary School.
Yes.
I maybe just pronounced it. With him is Nancy Poole. Nancy is our parent in the district, and she's translating tonight. So today, Principal Lee spent his day at Royal Elementary School. I think it's a very enlightening experience. He's very interested in learning about how we educate our students here. He's seen some great differences, some things that he wants to take back with him to China. So I'm going to let him make, perhaps he wants to share something with you. Nancy can hear what he has to say, and you can talk into the microphone, and Nancy can share what you are saying, Principal Lee.
Sure, sure. Principal Lee said that he's very excited to be here for the board meeting. This is the first time for him to be here in America. I flew from China to America on October, on November eighth, and today I spent a whole day in Dr. Moyer's Royal Elementary School, and he really learned a lot, and he's like to put everything he learned back to China and share with the teachers. What I learned today is I really, really found that there's a lot of difference compared American education system and the Chinese education system, especially like 就是公民意识 哦，公民意识 呃，citizen, as a citizen and a resident's philosophy and 我要写他的一个什么 创，创新 啊，creative, and also and personality training. He found that there's a lot of difference. And Dr. Moyer is welcome to be in China coming April, and he'd like to give him more welcome in China, and also he'd like to introduce Chinese education experience to America. I think we can learn from each other and improve together through the communication. Chinese school teachers and students, they really like to learn from America, not only from the academically, but also the culture and the other levels. And American business school district teachers and students are all welcome to be in China. Also, all the board members, you are welcome to be in China. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your kind comments about the district, and if you'll stay there for a moment, we have a presentation for you. As a gift remembering us, we want to present you with a sweatshirt regarding our high school and a baseball cap, so you'll be
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
If I could, I'd just like to thank the board for the opportunity. Uh the teachers at Royal Lang have spent a great deal of time trying to teach our students about the culture of China. Uh they welcomed him, we opened arms today, uh we had a wonderful opening assembly for him. And our hope is to establish a cross-cultural connection, uh to teach our students that worldwide connections are very important and will continue to be important in their futures. Uh we did some some minor Chinese language instruction. Uh it was a joy to see the children all saying ni hao today to Principal Lee as he arrived. So they're enjoying the experience and experience a great deal and I hope to get uh Principal Lee to some other schools throughout the week. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moyer. I certainly want to attest to the fact that um I was at Dr. Moyer's assembly program today and the dragon was just unbelievable. They created a dragon for Principal Lee and the children and Mrs. Cox
Yeah, Mrs. Cox did a fabulous job.
Phenomenal. And uh wonderful music presentation and we had kids playing pianos and it was just an outstanding, our jazz stand was there in the high school, just a real upbeat welcome to Principal Lee and we certainly hope he has a good week. He'll be coming tomorrow to our calendar meeting to meet the rest of our administrative staff and Mr. Moyer has uh spent a lot of time, we thank him for at least making this work on our end and I know Dr. Moyer's gonna bring back a lot of wonderful things and certainly that's one of the things we're gonna talk about in our curriculum planning as we go forward, um how we can have a sister school in China. I wanna start off tonight by just recapping a little bit of of recent events. This has been a a year unlike I've never had before as a superintendent in terms of weather and extreme conditions. Needless to say, we had flooding that I've only ever had once before in my superintendent career and I was in Abingrove. And only once have I dealt with a storm like we had recently and that was when I was a resident in Sherman, Connecticut, I already moved on to Folksburg. We had twenty-four inches of snow in September and um the town has basically shut down for a week. But nonetheless, uh we we really struggled um with communications this past time around. There were so many things happened that were unexpected and I wanted to assure the board and the community that uh we've met and we've looked at this from a lessons learned perspective. And there are some things that we're going to do even immediately uh to help with um emergencies like this in the future. I think the first thing that we're going to do is we've spent a lot of time, Mr. Glancy, Dr. Miravelle, with our bus company and we even started this last year with our redistricting. We're in the process of updating all of our bus stops and creating what I call an alternate emergency plan and we're going to, this will be done hopefully in the next week or two, we're gonna mail this out to every one of our parents, we're not gonna um risk it with electronic means and we're gonna ask parents to post that in a prominent area and hopefully we won't have these just because since I've been superintendent, we haven't really had to use emergency snow boots. But goodness knows, we've had a lot of rainfall that has loosened the bases of a lot of trees and and you know looking at at the damage we've had in September and just recently, I would presume that any kind of heavy snowfall, we can expect some some more trees falling. Uh so we're going to get that updated list and and one of the things we're gonna let parents know is what you do with that list because um one of the profoundly difficult things recently, I know some parents were calling saying, why didn't you put all the alternate bus stops that we created? Well, WFMZ is not going to put on three or four paragraphs of bus stops. So we did do that in our alert now message, but unfortunately with the power being down and communications being really hard and I know myself, I I didn't get power in my own home until Thursday afternoon, three thirty and believe me, it was a hard cranky week for my wife and I, even the daughter was complaining about sleeping in a down comfort, but um nonetheless, we're gonna send that out as as quickly as possible. The other thing is we've anticipated and and tried to upgrade, um I guess what we call a generator operated communication system. Unfortunately, we've ordered the parts, we're anticipating problems and our target is to get finished before the snow season this year. However, we we did not make it in our objective. Through the efforts of Mr. Moyer, Mr. Glancy, Mr. Ritter, we have we have purchased all the parts, it's just a matter of installing them so that if we have a situation like this in the future, at least our district website will be able to operate on a minimal basis, but at least allow us to advertise some information. But once you remember, one of the difficult things we faced in this last disaster was that our district communication system was tied in with the location of high school and that was in a borough and we really didn't get power um that Tuesday evening until about quarter of nine. In fact, that was the night I made two alert now messages. So um we've also discovered through the troubles this year that there are certain places in the district we know, Spring Creek Road and areas out in Zionville, St. Peter's Road, um that could be impacted by any uh any trees falling down in the future, any 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 kind of uh heavy duty rain. So I think these emergency bus stop lists will will go a long way, at least giving parents. And one of the things we're gonna simplify this, if we call emergency route day, it will be from morning and afternoon period. And a lot of times, um one of the issues we had were as a area was cleaned up, buses were going back and are on their regular runs and and that was confusing some parents and so we certainly apologize for any inconvenience, it was just extremely difficult times and I can tell you, talking to Bob Gross, he's a superintendent of Salisbury, and Sandra Felon at uh Salka Valley, I think we were all pouring our collective hair out over this last storm. But uh we'll get that out to parents as soon as possible. Uh two other things I want uh Mr. Glancy to update you on is and that is uh we have our demand reduction uh plan and I'm also gonna ask Mr. Glancy to give you an update on Ref Pay.
Thank you very much. We talked about uh demand reduction. Two thousand nine, PPL's rates increased from twenty to thirty percent and PPL and Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland interconnection uh developed an energy demand reduction program. And what that program did was pay the school district to reduce electric load when it was requested by PGM or PPL. And over the last two years, we have had a contract with Clear Choice Energy as our demand response provider. Over those two years, we have received a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in payment for being ready to reduce our electric peak demand. It is now time to renew or cancel our contract with Clear Choice or change to another demand response provider. Clear Choice has given us an estimate that our payments for the next three years would be up to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. An alternate to Clear Choice Energy would be EnerNOC and Company. Now, EnerNOC is an international company and they are the largest demand response provider in the world currently right now. Uh there's another company that's almost the same size as EnerNOC, so they're very close. Uh they serve ninety-six hundred customers, customer sites, and they have given us a demand response proposal that over the next three years, they would estimate we would be paid two hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars for demand reduction. In addition to that, they will provide at no additional cost, real or near real time metering at all ten of our school buildings. At the end of the three-year contract, we would own this metering equipment. The installation of this metering equipment is worth approximately fifty thousand dollars. So this equipment and software will give us the ability to measure when we use the largest or peak amount of electricity and that will allow us to monitor that use accurately enough so that we can actually shave the peak. And if you shave the peak, you can actually reduce your PPL bill. Right now, we can only see that at the end of the month. We can't see it on a fifteen-minute basis or an hourly basis. If we had the metering in place, we would be able to see every fifteen minutes. So we can see as the load changed, we've got a problem in a certain region. So what we would like to do is put a recommendation on the next month's agenda and because we believe that EnerNOC is giving us a financially uh improved offer that we terminate our agreement with Clear Choice and enter into a three-year agreement with EnerNOC. The first year estimated payment from EnerNOC would be sixty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and that would offset part of the cost for our electricity for that year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for uh Mr. Glancy?
I think I recall when we entered Clear Choice that there were other other entities in the area that were making use of those services. Are there any other um local districts or local companies using EnerNOC?
At this point, we would be the first in our county to be using them, but as I said, they're national, they're international, they're in Canada, they're in uh Britain, United Kingdom, so uh they have a wide uh wide area of service.
Other questions? Uh I have one, uh has the solicitor reviewed this uh demand response sales and services agreement in particular clause three G?
I've seen it, I can't can't specifically say three G as I sit here, you have it in front of you, I don't, but I believe Mr. Glancy forwarded some documents to be reviewed.
Um under this uh three G, there seems to be a um clawback provision, if you will, to keep EnerNOC no matter what uh the situation is because what it says is if we uh at the end of the term wish to contract with any other demand response service from within one year from the last day of the term, customer hereby entitles EnerNOC to match any written offer or proposal for demand response services within thirty days of receiving the proposal and if EnerNOC matches such offer or proposal, EnerNOC shall be awarded the associated contract.
I did read that, I did see that.
Yeah, I have a a problem with that, I mean if you're terminating, you're terminating. There shouldn't be any clawback uh provision.
Take a second.
Take a uh take a look at that and uh see what we can do here. Are there other observations or comments about this proposal? Are you reading a sense of the board?
Well, our intent was to was to alert you to what we were what we're doing, I think I think we might give us
Are there any other comments or questions before they bring it back to us uh at the next meeting? None appearing, uh thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask Mr. Glancy to give you an update on Ref Pay.
And uh at the last board meeting, the board had some very good questions. Um I told the board, currently, the athletic department pays our game officials with printed checks that are mailed to the officials after each event. Uh we have about a hundred and fifty checks go out currently sports season. Many colleges and school districts are going to a Ref Pay system to pay their game officials. The system was developed by Arbiter Sports in two thousand eight or the NCAA. The NCAA actually bought Arbiter Sports and asked them to develop this software and NCAA owns Arbiter Sports. This software is currently serving three thousand leagues and two hundred and seventy thousand officials. Ref Pay is the largest sporting officiating payment software system in the country. Now, the board had several questions about this recommendation. Ref Pay is a way to pay officials online and reduce the cost of mailing and processing the payments. The athletic department would continue to manage this process, which includes providing payment information to the board for approval. In addition, Ref Pay will produce an IRS uh ten ninety-nine form for each official. Each of our sporting seasons, fall, winter and spring, costs us about fourteen thousand five hundred dollars in officiating payments. This amount will be deposited in a Ref Pay account at the beginning of every sport season. Daily or weekly reports are available to monitor the payments that come out of this amount of money. Ref Pay has increased their fees once in the last three years. The district can cancel the agreement at any time we feel a fee increase is unreasonable. Northwestern Lehigh, Northern Lehigh and Whitehall School Districts are currently using Ref Pay and I've talked to one of the business managers uh in Northwestern Lehigh and they're very pleased with the operation of the system. And Parkland and Allentown are considering using it starting next fall. What we would be requesting the board to consider is ending the Ref Pay agreement at the December twelfth board meeting, um and I'd be happy to answer any other questions the board might have.
Okay, uh are there questions? Ms. Fuller, did I see you raising your hand?
No, I was making a thank you.
Any further questions? All right, then we'll expect to see the agreement uh on the next uh board agenda.
Yes, and if anyone else has a疑问，anybody has a question, please contact Mr. Glancy and we'll be able to at least, we'll wanna make sure you have the right information so you can vote next time.
Mr. Ballard?
Just one thing, it looked to me when when we looked at it at our last meeting that the agreement was a printout of their online, you know, the typical do you agree or not agree to the terms of this website. It looked, since they in in that agreement talked about them not having any any fees or charges except them keeping the interest and yet their website talks about the per payment charge, we may want to approach them and get an updated copy of that agreement that reflects their current fee schedule. I feel we're more comfortable with that.
Okay, again, thank you. Um following up with what our young high school representatives were telling you, I'm pleased to tell you that Terrific Teens, a new show um produced by Channel Thirty-nine, our public um broadcasting, will be um has been here and will be inviting our Manis High School Key Club to do a taping. It's the very first show, I understand, and actually amazing work they did in the Cops and Kids Program. So Thursday at eleven o'clock, our high school will be will be taping a a show and kids are gonna get a tour of Channel Thirty-nine and I know our two uh high school advisors are very excited about our kids getting some uh some publicity for that. Also, in terms of good news, it's my understanding, thank you, Mrs. Fuller, but you got a little update that we are, district is gonna be getting an award, a green award. Lehigh Valley Chaplain, Delaware Valley Building Council, will be receiving an award Wednesday night. It's that Steel Stack, Mr. Ritter and I will be representing the district and my understanding is we're waiting for the sustainability in energy category, so we're very happy about that. Last year, remember the board, we were nominated three categories and unfortunately a district that in the north was, beat us in every one of the things that we're getting awards. We're very happy about that and I certainly want to thank uh Mr. Glancy, Mr. Ritter and all of our staff for their efforts in in improving our energy conservation strategies internally. Last board meeting, you asked me to find out information about a company that Mr. Enchar, Mr. Ballard and I bumped into at our recent uh Pennsylvania School Boards and Pennsylvania Association School Administrators Conference and I had an opportunity to talk to the company. It's the company is verifiedresidents.com. They are sending us a proposal, but uh because we stopped by their booth, their usual price is about two dollars and ninety cents per student, they will drop the price to two two dollars and forty-five cents for us. Their uh record and they will be providing me with uh school districts where I can check their reference. Nice thing is it's a quick turnaround time, they give you a model, we dump the data in and they can do a full audit within three to five days. They almost guarantee you a one percent uh I guess discovery of kids who should not be attending school here. Uh in conversations with the company, they thought because of our location and because of our suburban nature that we might be uh even find a larger deal to go around. So I'm waiting till I I get the full proposal, when I get it, I'll certainly forward it to the board and I certainly want to contact the school districts who have used this product. They told me today that um putting a booth in Pennsylvania and they had one in the New Jersey School Boards Conference School Board's conference, may now receive requests from four hundred school districts for this proposal. So evidently, finding people who do not belong in the district is a hot issue. And so it's something, we're going to take a look at, and certainly want Mrs. Sertewal, Mr. Glancy, to see if there's somewhere in the budget we might be able to find sixteen thousand dollars to basically do this. The search is done in three stages. Give a basic roster of kids and the addresses they do a dump, and then they'll find, they say they work for maybe two, three hundred questionable addresses, and then they'll build, we'll verify those, and they'll build a follow-up. And then, like I said, within three to five days, we'll have a printout, and then we'll start the arduous task of Dr. Bell, or Bell, of checking out what are these people, if they really belong here. So if there's anything else that you think you'd like to know about this company, I can find out for you. And my call is to come back and talk about this information next board meeting. And if the board, if something you might be interested in doing, and we can put together an agenda for the first board meeting in January. Any questions? Are there any questions for Dr. Seidenberger and Mr. Enshaw?
First, just a comment. It's really great to see our Willow Lane Elementary School exploring the international options. I've been, spent the day in a meeting at work with about forty people, many of them from different parts of the world. We have people from Shanghai, Kuala Lumpur, Malaysia, somewhere in Taiwan, Germany, United Kingdom, France, Brazil, Spain, the Netherlands, and probably several other countries that I didn't catch. The reality of the business world today is it is an international business. And the more we can expose our students at a younger age to cultural differences and to make them aware of things outside of the U.S., I think, the better off they'll be in the future. The proposal from that firm, Dr. Seidenberger, that they would have, that they would estimate one percent of our students do not live in our country.
Eighty students.
It's eighty students.
That's a huge number of students.
Yes, it is. And, you know, if that is indeed the case, certainly, we should investigate. You know, we are in the business of educating the residents of East Penn School District, not someone who lives somewhere else who would like to take advantage of our education.
Well, I have no doubt that the man is telling me the truth, however, but I want to check it out with other school districts who have used the service. Great, and I'll get word about that, too. Also, one last thing, we have what looks like an inordinate amount of people attending some special ed education workshops. I note that Mrs., I mean, Ms. Bertzel, but you know the rationality, and it is, we all we, this is a mandate from the state. I just want to give you a heads up on some other things that are going on, and I'm going to maybe just say my comments for the Pennsylvanian Department of Education when I get to this budget primer. Our goal is, traditionally, next board meeting is reorganization. However, because of the way the calendar is falling out this year, with your indulgence, we would like to have, after everyone's sworn in and we have election of officers, have, Mrs. Sertewal, I'll give you an overview of this where we are in the budget process and present a preliminary budget for your consideration. Remember, this year, the calendar's been accelerating. So what I want to do tonight, the next couple of moments, is sort of set a stage, because every year is unique. And if I can do this, and I certainly will send these comments to Mrs. Doncic and Mr. Barker, so that they have a little bit of an understanding of the uniqueness that we're facing this year. And what I want to do is just go over some things, and I think if we get a common understanding about some of the issues facing this, I'll make the budget process go hopefully in a smooth manner. And that is, and I'm just going to highlight some of those things. Now, I want to remind everybody, this year's budget, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, the budget was spending less than in this year's budget we did last year. That sounds great on paper, it is problematic. And I think you understand it, because we've made some serious cuts over the last couple of years in operating costs. So we're getting to a critical point. Want to remind you again, the index is one point seven. Mrs. Sertewal will be able to tell you next board meeting, across me, what's the value of that one point seven. Again, CPI is running at about three point four percent. Simply means translating it, and Mr. Glancy will tell you it's, what we said is a supplement. It's a simple cost of doing business, there's inflation factor. One of the more difficult things that we're facing, and I hope that Mrs. Sertewal can give you an update, tax assessment appeals. There's been a logjam, even though you can't file a new claim now, there are many assessment appeals going through the system, and it is causing a decrease in overall revenues from real estate, or at least our level of real estate taxes. And it is problematic. And not only we spend, but every super tenant we have now, in fact, the state will tell you, this is something that's really hit us unexpectedly and continues. And we hoped it would evade a little bit with reassessment coming up, but it's the backlog of cases, and just making sure. So the board members, if a company or a concern or a family wins an appeal, we've got a reimbursed amount of this year's funds, which we do not anticipate on our budget. Again, we want to remind you that the housing market is sluggish at best. We don't see any real growth in commercial industrial tax base, which would certainly help the individual homeowners in this, in this environment. Earned income tax collections will now be in hands of Burckheimer. We do not have a track record with them, we're optimistic, but again, we're going to have to wait and see what the pattern looks like of our collection rates as we get into January, February, March, and hopefully, we'll be able to then refine our estimates on earned income tax as part of revenues. Want to remind everyone, last year, basically, we had no salary increases because all the employees, the wage freeze. So there's going to be salary increases in this budget, although they're less than what contractually we're obligated to do, nonetheless, there's going to be an increase, and that will impact the budget. And we do not have the two million dollars, about two point two millions of employees' concessions that will help balance this budget. There are going to be exceptions to Act One, however, as you know, the legislature acted on those last spring. We think we will qualify again for special education in Peasars, but in conversations with other superintendents, PDE people, Jay Hines from Pasbo, and Mrs. Sertewal, we expect that the special education eligibility is going to be greatly decreased from well over a million to maybe about two hundred and fifty thousand, which is a significant drop. There's no indication of what we can expect in basic education subsidy. Again, I had an opportunity to sit with people from second and third ranking people from PDE this week, and Jay Hines from Pasbo, and Jim Buckeye from PASA, and we're going to hear those folks again on Wednesday. And Lehigh's bringing in Tom Gensel, bringing in PSCA, Pasbo, and PASA to have their annual economic look or legislative look at what's going to happen. And although we've heard rumors about two percent, that's a stretch perhaps, and so we don't know what basic education subsidy increase will be, if there is any at all. There's no expectation, none whatsoever, we're going to see increased funding for special ed, either at the state or the federal level. I'm zero confident about any increases in areas. And as you know, remember, we talked about increases, dramatic increases on special education, special needs populations. There's no indication, and again, we didn't hear anything encouraging last Thursday, that the governor or the legislature will restore the charter school tuition reimbursement. And again, those are the audience and board members, that's about five hundred thousand dollars. Are you here for us? There's no indication that the governor or the legislature will fix the funding issues around the charter schools and cyber charter schools. And as you would suspect, I questioned Iraqi people in the Department of Education, made them nervous, and again, expressed our greatest pleasure that over ten-year period they're going to be looking at. AYP this year, nine out of eleven charter schools did not make AYP, yet the state's considering applications from seven. This is something we're going to have to weigh in this year. Enrollment, again, is showing increases in lower grade populations, special education, ELL students and students who fall into the economically disadvantaged categories. And we're going to have to deal with those entities in our student populations. And again, I want to emphasize, we're not going to be able to duplicate the level savings that we currently have in the current budget with vendor contracts. Remember, last year, I came back in September and tells you what a great job Mr. Glancy, Mr. Ritter did of really working with our vendors to knock down a lot of contract arrangements. We have Johnson Controls and our phone company, our phone service, Diget. And I don't think we can expect those kind of squeezing strategies this year. And again, argue with our green computing, we realize the savings in paper and postage. So we're not going to be able to bring those savings to you next year. There's going to be, again, I think we talked about this last year, less employee retirements. And again, like any other year, we're going to have to take a look at, do we, if we can, do we replace them or not? Not replacing staff members is certainly not going to help to reduce class size, that's fundamental. And I think everybody understands that. If you're not going to replace a teacher, chances are our class size, I don't care what you do, it's not going to go, it's not going to alter, maybe only maintain in some We still, and again, in our conversations with Amy Morton and Carolyn Hill West, what's the state, what's going on with unfunded mandates? And again, I'm really concerned about new legislation coming down, teacher and principal evaluation, looks really attractive on paper, but I see a lot of unforeseen costs in that. I wonder, talking about handheld units that principals are going to use, walking around classrooms, we got rid of a lot of cell phones last year. So iPads or iPhones, but we dramatically lessened our inventory of those things. Only enough we have the right equipment to do that. Plus, it's going to be a significant amount of time that our staff are going to have to spend getting it serviced next year. And if passed, the law would only affect classroom teachers. And so art, music, speech therapists, special education features, that would not be in place for a year out. And I know the State Department tells us they're modeling after Tennessee, but everything I've read, Tennessee's kind of a disaster. So I don't know, I'm very nervous about, these are kind of, this is kind of legislation that is always a kicker to us, that no one tells you about until the law's passed, and then, wow, we're going to have to pay for stuff. Certainly, we don't know what's going to be the final termination with vouchers, although we've been told repeatedly that this is not a high priority for the House, what we'll see. But we're also hearing that expanded charter schools legislation may come in. And last year, we told you that LCTI had some leftover funds from their construction accounts, about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we will not have that money to help offset the budget this year. And again, this is going to go on, not going to go through everything but revenues, you kind of self-explain that story, everything's a big question mark in revenues at this point. Our collection rates are good so far this year, but we'll have to see. Again, for us, the state, is the state going to fund ABG grant again this year? We don't, we have no clue what's going to go on. And of course, the ultimate question is, will the transition to Burckheimer be smooth, and will the collection rates be higher than what we anticipate? Appropriations, I'm going to make no bones about it, I mean, there's going to be like everything, there are going to be some things that are just not in the law. And we'll do our best to control the growth, but there's going to be an increase in salary medical benefits. Last year, we got a great deal. Business managers in the county are beating up the blues, and we're happy about that. But last year, we had a great rate, and we're going to do our best to duplicate that, but I'm not optimistic at this point. Special education costs are going to continue to rise, more kids, more services, more individuals needed to serve, and that's something that's a reality. Charter school and cyber school costs are going to go up, and we're going to have to make a major decision on January, about seven generations. By the way, we finished our collection, we have a list now on my staff, and I'm going to ask for them in terms of document collection, we will be visiting them in early September, and then we're going to come back to the board in January with a recommendation of whether your charter should be extended or not. We don't know, I had a little bit of clue last week, I wrote this last week, I've had some information now on LCTI and the IU budgets, I don't have any information on LTRIC's budget. Transportation costs, we have a contract for first student, and it'll be year three of the contract, and we're due for an increase in those rates. And again, I'm really concerned about, again, an unforeseen element of teaching, in teacher evaluation, that is, we're going to need more materials. Any teacher evaluation system will not be solely dependent on PSSA scores, there'll be other indicators. Some of that will be tests that we don't own at this point, that we don't use. So I'm assuming, when we get the list from the State Department, what allows us, we're going to have to go out and buy some materials. Again, without beating a dead horse, another unfunded mandate. I can see this one, as clear as the day, oops, but we're going to have to pay for it. And I'm not saying I'm anti-teacher evaluation system, but wouldn't it be nice if the state comes up with something new and actually pays for it? I've been working with Mrs. Dowak and Dr. DiIgma, and basically, there's some things we really need to do in terms of mathematics textbooks. Now, we've asked them to be discreet, but at some point, we're going to have to replace textbooks. And finally, Peasars contributions will increase. And some of the open-ended issues that I think we haven't talked it out, but we really need to have a conversation between now and June, when you, when the board adopts the final budget. And are there some projects that Mr. Glancy, Mr. Ritter can do either through somebody remaining bond funds we have labeled, or through our capital reserve accounts, to do in terms of energy savings with a quick payback? Anything you do with making a change in energy controls is always a cost for implementing, and then you have to calculate what's the payback time. So we're going to be looking for low-hanging fruit in that regard. And then, there's something we've dabbled about, we've talked about, but as you know, I've had proposals from several companies regarding contracts with advertising, I'm not a real big fan of that, but something we may want to look at. And then, something I talked about two years ago, but I've now talked to other superintendents, and that is forming a foundation. I know we want to take a look at Northwestern Lehigh, pay the foundation, those donations are offsetting some of their expenses in technology. And of course, with legislature, I'm anticipating them increasing the EITCs, which are the tax credits for businesses. I think we would do well shopping that concept of low-cost businesses here, you know, get a tax credit and make a donation, and perhaps we can help our students either through tutorial services or some big item that's allowable under the law. And then, something, again, we haven't done here, but I've done in other districts, last year, we cut Mr. Moe's technology budget by about two hundred thousand dollars. We do have equipment that is getting old. We want to maintain our standing as a good district, we still have to be machines to do basic work here. So do we want to even consider a lease purchase agreement for updating electronic equipment? And then, should we, again, return and look at fees for variety, things like student activities, student athletics, adult ed, use of facilities? So it promises to be an interesting budget season. I'll remind the board that, and Mrs. Sertewal correct me on, the first decisions you have to make, are we going to vote to stay with any index, or are we going to vote for preliminary budget? Which gives us then the ability to seek exceptions and prolong taking information, again, because we haven't used all the exceptions the last few years, but making a decision on that, and then, running the budget process, take its, take its course over the period of time I've told you. That's all I have, Mr. Bowden. Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions, Dr. Seidenberger? I have a couple, and start back with the oldest stuff. It's my understanding, Dr. Seidenberger, that when the height of the snow crisis, only two of our schools had power?
The initial, two schools came back on, they, I'm sorry, hold on. Lower McCutcheon Middle School was the first back on in Westl, Westlazville. But Lower McCutcheon School, pardon me, Albertus, that's right, surprising.
Albertus and LMS, neither were on.
They were on. They were on.
Well, the reason I ask that is, many years ago, I took a tour of the buildings, including the boiler rooms, and at that time, a number of the schools had natural gas-powered generators in the schools. And I was wondering what the status of those was, and why we didn't have more schools with the emergency generators?
All the generators were running in all the schools.
Do you want to, do you want to, Spock, keep them up? Everybody else, Mr. Ritter?
All of the generators in all the schools were running, because they were either gas-fired or oil-fired or diesel-fired. So they were all running all the time, they were without power.
So we had emergency power in all the buildings?
Right, but as you understand, it's limited, it's limited emergency power. And some had a boiler and a circulator pump on and controls, that's it.
Okay, so basically, we can keep the building maintainable, but we can't have school in it, that's...
But that's light.
But we do have it to cover any emergency that might occur in the school?
Yes.
Thank you.
We had a problem with Shoemaker's generator, I think.
Yeah, we did have, we had a problem. Shoemaker's ran and then it shut down at one point.
How often do we test these generators?
They are run once a week for a half an hour.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, in regard to your budget primary here, there's a couple of things that I wanted to mention. One, very important for the board, the vote that Dr. Seidenberger is talking about for going for the index has to be done in December, because the cutoff date, based on the primary, which is part of the law, would have to have it done by January 5th, Mrs. Hertel?
Yes, that's correct.
We're not meeting between January 1st and January 5th. So the December 14th, I think it is, 12th board meeting, is the one where we're going to have to decide whether or not we're going to apply for exceptions or not. So the new board that's coming in, we'll get a briefing now on the 5th, right after the reorganization meeting. And then, one week later, we'll have to make a very major decision on whether or not we apply for exceptions. So we need to take all of this material that Dr. Seidenberger has given us, plus the material we're going to get on the 5th, and very carefully look at this, because we're going to have much earlier, because of these strained time schedules, have to make this decision. So be aware of that, and you're going to have to do a quick study to have your opinions and comments ready for that meeting on the 12th. So I want to have everybody to understand that, and we'll make sure the new board members coming in also...
I will write, I will write Mr. Bakker and Mrs. Doncic a letter, basically giving them what I gave you tonight.
Okay. And I also wanted to make two brief comments about material that's in here. Hidden in what Dr. Seidenberger gave us is a truth that the taxpayers ought to know, and it's an understanding of what the legislature has done to this district over the years. We have a cost of inflation, CPI, currently running at 3.4%. And what the legislators will tell you is, they've increased every year the appropriation on special, or space, basic education subsidy to the district. Every year, they've increased the amount. Unfortunately, they only increase it, in our case, because we're considered to be a wealthy district by 2%. So inflation, their numbers, which we could take either from the index or from the CPI, are running higher in many years than the amount that they're increasing the subsidy to the East Penn School District. So that's why currently, state payments to this district account for less than 20% of our revenue, the budget, less than 20%. It used to be a 50-50 split, but by continuously giving less money, then the budget has to increase by some of their own unfunded mandates and other factors like PISERs, which they control and we don't, the contribution to the state employees' retirement system, they are slowly forcing more and more of the expenditures on the local taxpayers, and that's why property tax rates are so high. And the last comment I wanted to make was, we're talking about vouchers, and I'll get a little bit more into that during my presentation on legislation, but for those in East Penn who are thinking that they're going to get something out of this voucher program, I want to disabuse you. First of all, all the proposals so far, at least for the first few years of any voucher program, are for failing school districts. And let me tell you, East Penn is not failing. So people in East Penn School District are not going to get vouchers for anything. And the second thing is, the amount calculated, because of that figure I just told you about, where the state is only providing 20% of our budget, is that even if there was something that would, in the proposals I've seen so far, that would say that anybody in East Penn could get a voucher, the amount is going to be $2,600 a year. That's the proposed voucher number. It's much higher in other districts, say like Allentown, or Duquesne, or some of the other...
Redding.
Redding, some of those places, Pittsburgh. But in East Penn, the calculated numbers on the latest chart I've seen are a little over $2,600. So don't go looking for a windfall out of this voucher program, and there are other things wrong with it, we'll talk about later. Are there any other questions for Dr. Seidenberger? If not, let us go on to item 2, 6.2, could I have a motion, please? Is there any discussion on the personnel issues? Mr. Urshoff?
Well, thank you, Mr. Ballard. The list of educational conferences has a very large list, I think I counted it, I think it was 40, 41 teachers, who are being mandated by the state to attend training on Indicator 13, which is all about transition for IEP students. This is yet another example of an unfunded mandate. Now, the training itself is not expensive, it's $43.29 per person, and that covers five different day-long sessions. The real kicker is that we're going to have to hire substitutes for many of these people. And that's where we really get hit to the tune of perhaps $15,000 to $20,000. And this is, this is not something that's optional, it's not something that we said, you know, we really ought to focus on this, the state told us, we have to do it, and we have to find a way to make it happen. And so, it's challenging enough in this budget year, without the state layering on additional mandates, and although $15,000 or $20,000 is not much in the total scheme of our budget, it's $15,000 or $20,000 that we had to eliminate printed report cards in order to pay for that sort of thing. So I certainly support it, we have to abide the law, but we definitely need to talk to our legislators and really express to them over and over again that many of the drivers behind tax increases are what's coming out of regulations from the Department of Education and laws passed by the legislature. And if they would give us relief from those, we would have a much easier time controlling these increases. Thank you, Mr. Ballard.
Any other comments on the first ballot motion? Ms. Hertzler, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Richman.
Aye.
Mr. Paul O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Ms. Damon.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Urshoff.
Aye.
Ms. Dow.
Aye.
We'll now move on to the approval for the submission to the Department of Education of the midpoint review of the East Penn Strategic Plan. May I have a motion, please? So, Mr. Seidenberger?
Any questions from the board? We sent basically the pros. Dr. Thoma, let's hear if you have any questions. Again, I want to thank members of my staff who put in many hours updating the reports. I think we gave you a overview last time, I think the results we had with our steering committee were very positive, and I think the changes that were reflected in the documents you have, I think align this district with where we are in essence going here. And I'm very pleased with the direction.
Are there any comments? None appearing, Ms. Hertzler, you call the roll, please.
Ms. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Paul O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Urshoff.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Ms. Damon.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Any others? Other educational entities, Harbin Lehigh Intermediate Unit with his last report, Mr. Richman.
I actually don't have much to report. The next meeting of the IU Board is next Monday, I will be introducing Ms. Ford as my replacement, Charlie notes, I think several people on that board, and then I'll just be able to come back in December to their holiday dinner, and then I don't have to worry about going to the meeting afterwards. And also, I have one meeting left with the LCTI, and then I will be leading that board also. So tonight isn't the end, it's just the beginning of the end. I've always tried to convey what the IU does, it's difficult because of the varied services we provide, and we don't necessarily need to take advantage of some of their services because the size of our district can absorb some of the activities, but they are there for the smaller districts, the less well-funded districts, and I know that over the years, they've provided services, especially in the special ed category. I actually forgot when I started on the IU Board, about 10 years ago, I guess, I don't know. But it's been an experience, and they, like the staff at LCTI and East Penn, do a good job for the children.
Thank you, Ms. Richman. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Richman? None appearing, we'll move on to the Lehigh Career and Technical Institute, Ms. Ford.
Thank you, I'll preface my report by saying, thank you, Mr. Richman, for your service, not only here, but at CLIU and LCTI, here we are. Our meeting on October the 26th featured a fun session on Collins Writing for Word Enrichment, which is a program that has been incorporated throughout the, throughout the school to help students become familiar with vocabulary words that they will be needing in their professional settings. And we had a bit of fun with that. We also received information about the fund excess revenues that will be coming back to our districts in January. LCTI is in the midst of trying to get its budget together as we are here, and you know, the crystal ball is cloudy for all of us. They're talking about next year already, but at the moment, as they close out the year, they find that their projections, which are conservative, that they must be, so that they don't end up with difficulties at the end of the year, that East Penn, in their January member billing, will receive a credit of $13,140,83 in the general fund excess revenues for the, for the school itself. And then there's an academic center fund excess revenue. And East Penn will be receiving from that, maybe, actually, we are a little bit in arrears there, we will not be receiving, we will be owing $313.45 because of the level of students that have taken advantage of the academic center. But however, over the course of time, back when we started the academic center at LCTI, some funds have been retained for use for each of the school districts for academic center use to offset the cost of tuition at the academic center. So we currently have available to us for student use $83,528.42 that can be used to offset future tuition at the academic center. Also, we will be holding a meeting on November the 22nd for the interview for the new executive director of the LCTI. Dr. Hornberger has very hard shoes to sell, and we are eager to interview the person who will next take LCTI forward. And since there are other members here who are on that board, I welcome their comments as well.
Anything added to Ms. Ford's report? Anything, Ms. Ford? Legislative, well, we're at what I would call the legislative silly season. This morning, there were only 12 voting days left on the House calendar before the end of the year. In that time, there are a number of major issues that are trying to be resolved by some members in that very short time. So it's very possible that we will see one of these last-minute sudden explosion of bills that nobody has reviewed, and nobody's even seen the language of, on a number of issues. One major issue from a finance standpoint is the Marcellus Shale tax issue, which is up. But for school districts, the main issue is vouchers. It is now in the House, it's the House I was talking about, the calendar. And Senate Bill 1 has been passed and sent to the House. It is not clear what's happening there, not at all. There may be House bills that are put in separately and then sent on to the Senate for concurrence, that mirrors some parts of SB 1, but there is still a very distinct danger to public schools in the proposal for vouchers. You need to contact your House members and let them know, you know, what the problems are with vouchers. First of all, money has to come from somewhere. If somebody is taking, at the last estimate, even at the start of this program, even with a reduced program of $51 million for vouchers for people in 144 failing school districts whose parents make a factor of, I believe, three times the poverty, under three times the poverty level, which is, I think, approximately $60,000, something like that, they would be eligible for these vouchers. But the vouchers would depend on exactly which of the failing school districts are in as to the amount. The Senate's own budgetary estimate is that after year three, 80% of the money from this voucher program would go to people, students who are already enrolled in private or pro field schools, which means that they weren't moving all of that many students out of the failing so-called schools, leaving behind a large population of kids labeled in failing schools with less money, because the voucher money moves with the kid. So it's a situation that I find inexplicable from a number of, I'll use the small R Republican principles. It's increasing the amount of government with the bureaucracy to take care of the vouchers. It's creating a new entitlement program. It's giving taxpayers less control, oversight, and ability to criticize than they have in the public schools. It's a whole number of things that I find extremely objectionable, especially from the standpoint of being an engineer, looking at a systems approach of things and saying, okay, what is the mechanism by which simply moving a child from one school district to another will cure problems that can be caused by the child's environment? another will cure problems that can be caused by the child's environment?" I just don't understand how this is supposed to be a fundamental mechanism to work. And so, I have been telling all the legislators I can that I just don't understand. I would like one of them to explain to me how this is supposed to work. I'm an engineer. I can handle very complex descriptions of how a mechanism is supposed to accomplish a task. I would like to hear exactly how this is supposed to do it. There are a lot of people out there who are going to look at vouchers as being another source of free money from the government. And, like I said, from a Republican with a small r, principles, I do not understand this at all. So, I'm asking everyone to please talk to your legislators and ask them the question. How is this supposed to work? What is it supposed to do? How is it supposed to improve things? My analogy is, is that if there were a crime wave in the city, would you be advocating abolishing the police force and creating a private militia to enforce the law? And I think the answer would be hell no. We want to fix whatever is wrong with the police system that's not keeping this crime under control. So, why would you propose a similar type of approach to public education? Like I said, it's just beyond me. So, other than the crazy environment in Harrisburg, which could end up with anything, it's a crapshoot if it's going to come out. So, keep tuned to your news. Listen very carefully because the actual days are November fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, November twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third, December fifth, sixth, seventh, twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth. That's it. That's the days that the House is going to be in session and have some action taking place. Twelve days, and they're talking about major, major implications for finances and schools and infrastructure and a whole lot of other things. And under those circumstances, I suppose the old saying about legislation is it's like making sausage. You don't really want to know how it's done. But in this case, I think somebody needs to take a step back and take a deep breath and decide that maybe we ought to have something that the public actually has a chance to weigh in on for some of these things. Are there any questions about the current legislative environment that I can illuminate you on?
If not, we'll move on to business operations. Does anyone have objections to taking items one, two, three, and four together? None appearing with items nine, one through four?
Second.
Any discussion on any of these items? None appearing. Ms. Richline, will you call? No, please.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Ms. Gannon.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Paula Connaught.
Aye.
Mr. Richline.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Bauer.
Aye.
Aiden.
All right. I know that there's at least one gentleman with some new business to come before the board. That's Mr. Richline.
Mr. Bauer, if I could before that, I just noticed a few minutes ago that we did not have a motion on this agenda to approve the meetings. Minutes from last meeting.
Ah. So, okay. If we could do that, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes of our... So, what was last one? The October 24th meeting.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Richline.
Thank you. Like I said, I had dotted down some things that I wanted to address in that this is my last meeting. Much of this I've said over time, but a lot of it has to do with what I felt the role of public education is in society today, in general and in East Penn. And I had mentioned some of the things that, how they were when I started on the board in the 1996, 97 school year. Or actually, that was the first budget I was involved with. And I had noted at another meeting that at that time, we had enrollment of sixty-five hundred and sixty students and a building capacity of only fifty-seven hundred. And you included the fact that it was agreed that Jefferson had to be replaced. We actually had to provide over twelve hundred spaces just for the students we had at that time. And looking at that budget book and seeing that most of the school buildings had not been worked on in twenty or thirty years, since the sixties and seventies. So, the building plan that was in place had to come up with over a twenty percent increase in capacity just to meet the need at the time. We now have eight thousand students. That was over another... That's another twenty percent increase. So, since I was on the board, we've had to increase capacity by almost fifty percent. I know people have pointed out our debt. We don't build, renovate, and expand ten school buildings without having to incur debt. I remember my first meeting where I was originally sworn in was held at West Coastville Elementary before it was expanded. Other changes in the district which have affected how we operate. When I joined the board, low-income students, they have three percent of our student population. That percentage is now seventeen percent. And it's a well-known fact that low-income students are harder and more difficult to educate. They come to school less prepared. They're behind. They have less assistance outside of school. And they traditionally do not do well on standardized tests. The fact that we've been able to keep our PSSA scores as high as they are is remarkable, even though, as I said before, I don't really believe in standardized testing to judge a school. There's a quote by H.G. Wells that I think is appropriate. Says, "Our challenge is not to educate children we used to have or want to have, but to educate the children who come to the schoolhouse to work. We don't get to pick and choose. We take them all." And just like that increase in low-income students, we have seen a tremendous increase in special ed students. These are students that private and parochial schools do not have to take. Our special ed costs have increased three hundred and seventy percent in recent years. State funding has increased forty percent. Our net cost has increased by nine and a half million dollars. This, we have to do by law, and it's the right thing to do. I'm not criticizing special education. I'm just saying, I'm just criticizing how it's funded or how it's not funded. Another unfunded mandate, it started off as an underfunded mandate, is now an unfunded mandate, is charter schools. We now pay three million dollars where, at one time, we paid nothing since charter schools did not exist. Those two items account for roughly twenty percent of the millage that is paid in this district. Those are costs we really have no control over. I know that this board has been criticized over the years and accused of not being fiscally responsible. I'd like to note that since I joined the board, East Penn, and this isn't because of me, but it's just the frame of reference I have, we have gone from the fourth highest millage in the county to the third lowest. That would be from sixth to third in millage. And that's despite all those extra students, all that extra building, all that extra special ed funding. A study by the Center for American Progress, which studied all of the school districts in Pennsylvania as well as in other states, East Penn received the highest rating in the category for basic return on investment. We were one of only thirty-nine districts in the state and the only one in Lehigh County to get the highest rating. When Moody's increased our bond rating, some of their comments include, "The rating reflects the district's historically strong financial operations, conservative financial management practices. Moody's expects the district will maintain a satisfactorily financial position, given its history of conservative fiscal management practices." I think those opinions of organizations not related to East Penn, I believe, says volumes about our fiscal responsibility. The academic performance of East Penn is as good as anyone in the area. For many years, we offered more AP courses than any other school. We had more students taking AP tests, and we had a higher percentage of those students receiving the highest grades on AP tests. Our National American Scholarship semifinalists, this year, we had half of the semifinalists in Lehigh County and over a third in the Lehigh-Northampton County area. And it wasn't unusual since we've been averaging almost ten students a year, reaching that achievement, even though statistically, we should only be having three to four students do that. In a recent Morning Call article, citizens who have moved into Lower McCunche Township said, "A lot of us are in Lower McCunche Township for the reputation of East Penn School District." When you have highly educated people moving into a school district, that should say volumes for the quality of East Penn education. Unfortunately, public education is under attack right now nationally. And I believe it's due to several factors. One, money. People and corporations decided you can make money in education. What better way to make money is in driving public education out of the way and privatize all education. Another is union busting. Destroy the school, the public education system, you destroy the unions. Forget that that leaves students without a free and appropriate education. And most insidious, I think, is the idea of the resegregation of public education, not by race, but by the haves and the have-nots. If education is privatized, some people will go to the Saks Fifth Avenue of schools, but most people will be... Most students will be relegated to the Walmart's. And there is no compaction. It's a way of the haves to keep what they have. The fact that people funding these movements, most never went to public school. Many of your education reformers, if not most of your education reformers, never went to public schools. And this goes across party lines. I personally think Arnie Duncan is as big a disaster as Secretary of Education, as Barbara Spellings, and Rod Page. In public opinion polls, which are taken every year and usually result in the same percentages, when people were asked to give a grade to the public education system as a whole, only seventeen percent gave an A or a B, thirty percent gave it a D or a F. However, when it's more focused into their community schools, the A/B category jumps from seventeen to fifty-one percent, the D/F category goes from thirty to sixteen. And when asked how they rate their child's school, the A/B goes from fifty-one percent to seventy-nine percent, and the D/F category goes from sixteen to four. International comparisons are made constantly, and are usually used to bash the American school. However, studies have been done breaking down these results. And even though, as on average, American schools finish in the middle of the pack, U.S. schools with less than ten percent poverty are equal to any country in the world, including Singapore, which is top. In fact, in an interview with Fareed Zakaria, the Minister of Education of Singapore, whose name I can't pronounce, I won't even try, made the comment, "We both have meritocracies. Yours is a talent meritocracy. Ours is an exam meritocracy. There are some parts of the intellect that we are not able to test well, like creativity, curiosity, a sense of adventure, ambition. Most of all, America has a culture of learning that challenges conventional wisdom, even if it means challenging authority. And those are areas that Singapore must learn from America." But he also comments, "Unless you are comfortably middle-class or richer, get an education that is truly second-rate by any standards." And that's why we are lucky enough in East Penn to at least be adequately funded. But the schools that really need the help are the urban schools. Our guest tonight from China is... Or I have some comments by a Chinese educator who's now living in the United States. And his comments are, "By grading student success on governments' set standards in a limited number of subjects such as math, reading, and science, the United States is eager to throw away one of its global advantages, an education that respects individual talents and does not dictate what students learn or how teachers teach." That is pretty much what we've been driven to by No Child Left Behind. He comments, "Its standards and high-stakes testing run the risk of ruining the advantages and great tradition of the city." And he finishes by saying, "What China wants, what America is eager to throw away." As a school board member, the last sixteen years, I have tried to do what is best to see that the education provided for the East Penn School District students is a high-quality education which values things other than how you do on standardized tests. And I think it's a shame that we have to be driven by these tests. I think it's ironic that the critics say we don't compare well internationally, and then rather than trying to copy what they do in other countries, do exactly the opposite. And I know I'm probably preaching to... know I'm probably preaching to the choir, since many staff members are here, but I really believe that public education is part of what has made this country great. The ability for people of modest means or of no means to get an education, to get ahead, to make something out of their lives, is driven by the education they can receive in the public sector. And I believe that it is something worth saving, and I hope that all board members here and other school districts keep that in mind. That to throw away what we do well for reasons that have nothing to do with educating our children is something that we have to fight against. And I, I truly hope that this board's mission will continue to be to offer that kind of education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richline. Does anyone else have any other new business to come before us tonight? None appearing. Um, we had a, uh, clear session this, this evening to discuss confidential matters, uh, real estate, and, uh, hmm? That's it. Um, there will be a, uh, elementary parent-teacher conferences with a one-thirty PM dismissal, the week of November fourteenth. The, uh, LMMS Fall Comedy Tartuffe will be, uh, given in the LMMS auditorium, November seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, at seven-thirty PM. Uh, Monday, November twenty-eighth, will be a weather emergency makeup day. All schools and offices will be open the Monday after Thanksgiving weekend. Monday, December fifth, will be, at seven-thirty PM, the board reorganization meeting. And now we have heard a, uh, budget presentation by Mrs. Sertel. And, uh, Monday, December twelfth, will be our regularly scheduled board meeting. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.